Okay, all right. So call me at 6:00 and start with a pledge to flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right, very good. Okay, so we only have two items on the agenda. First thing is to kind of give everybody an update. Appreciate everybody coming out on an odd day and an odd tone. Okay, so here's what's going on. Obviously, we're having some issues with the water. Here's the issue that we have. We've been running two wells most of... We've cut one well down. We run only two wells most of the winter, fall, winter, spring. And in the summer, we have been turning on our third well. What we have, we have three wells. One is in the Woodbine Aquifer, it's 300 feet. The other two are in the Cloroxi, they're about 1,200 feet. When we turned the wells on, and the third well came on, immediately the two deep wells started cavitating, meaning they're sucking air. So there's not enough water over the top. So when you suck it, after a while, you draw it down, and then, just like a bathtub, you're sucking the air. So that started happening last week. We had to... There's only one solution, and that is you've got to throttle the well back. You've got... It can't suck that much. So we had to choke down the wells in order to get it so it can still produce water, but it can't produce as much as it wants, because it'll suck air. So what that means is, when we started doing that, after we were doing that, the number one well, which is the one that's in the shallow aquifer, also started cavitating. So now, all three wells are sucking air. So we've had to throttle back all three wells. So they've all been throttled back. Now, what can you do about it? Well, that's the water table. It's not the pump, it's not the storage tanks, it's not the pipes, it's not the electricity, it's not co-served. It's just flat out, the water table's dry. And that's water coming from Oklahoma through the, you know, through the aquifer and everything. It's not because of yesterday. It's everybody's, you know, it's usual water, and our production's down. So the good news is, we've got lots of storage. The bad news is, we can't fill it, because we don't... Can't get the wells running. Now, I went to stage three, I declared a stage three to go to even odd water. We did that last week, because I was out in town, and we got the call that we were unable to fill the tanks. So when we went to even odd, the average usage went from 150,000 gallons a day to over 200,000. So it spiked. Soon as we did that, it spiked up, which is why we ran pretty much 72 hours straight with the wells. Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, I was here pretty much all night juggling the switches and valves, trying to keep the system running, because we were hap... The usage spiked. Now, I think one reason why the usage spiked was because it's a little fuzzy on even odd. The reason being that what I think happened is that some people... What do you call Tuesday night at 3:00 in the morning? Is that Tuesday night, or is that Wednesday? On the calendar, that's Wednesday. But some people probably thought, "That's Tuesday night." Because it Monday and... So we did it on, I think, a Tuesday. Wednesday and Friday, we went through the roof. We went crazy on water, over 200,000 hours. And we can only pump 190 in a 24-hour span, running non-stop, full-out. That's why they couldn't keep water in the tanks. We were actually going down. So, what's the solution? Well, one solution is, we think... So about two years ago, one of the big wells, it's about 900 feet, it started cavitating. Two years ago, about two years ago, Clint?
I think it was two years ago. I was thinking maybe three.
Maybe three. So it started cavitating. So what we did is, we dropped it. Well, turn... Because the well's hanging, and then there's a screen at the bottom, and then you can drop it down to the screen, and that's as slow as you can go. Well, we looked at the logs. It's not clear where that guy's actually is today. We know where it was when they started. So for the one well, two years ago, we dropped it as far as we could, and it turned out it's 18 feet. Then we hit the bottom. So that well's done. It's already at the screen. The big well, that's deeper, okay? We think, we think there might be 100 feet between it and the screen. Maybe. We think. We won't know till we actually start dropping it to see where it is. The fundamental problem is, back in 2002, for whatever reason, they put two wells 50 feet from each other. Now, according to our water guy, the separation should be about 5,000 feet. Well, they made it 50 feet. They're 50 feet away from each other. And they're the same aquifer. And they set the pumps at about 50 feet apart in elevation.
So they're basically pulling water from each other on the...
They... Exactly. That's exactly what they do. Which is okay when the water's up here. Then you can do it down here. Then the other issue is, the wells are different sizes. So the big well, the well they put in is bigger than the other ones. So it's got a bigger motor, it sucks more, it produces more. So they... But they're basically side by side. So we can try and drop that well. We talked with the well drillers, talked to the engineers, we talked with the well drillers. Recommendation is, we'll try and drop the well. But in order to do that, the well's going to be offline for maybe a week. Their suggestion is, that's November. Do it in the winter. That way, because if... Basically, this thing's hanging. Twice before they dropped it. Twice before I got involved, the city didn't work on that well. And twice, they were lifting it up, and the cable broke. And the well went to the bottom of the well. They've dropped it twice, but they had to go down and try and fish it out. Because it's hanging by a cable. There's a cable and a pipe. So, working on this restriction is in place until November. We can't go offline. We can't chance it right now with that well. So the good news is, if we just do some restrictions, if we just get to stable, we'll be okay. So the biggest problem we had when the, when the usage spiked was that for three straight days, those tanks were half-full. They ran flat out 24 hours a day. I dropped the system pressure, which is a little bit like, you know, if your car, if you don't have a brake pedal, we let air out of the tires to slow you down. So we, I started manually dropping the system pressure. So if you took a shower, you didn't realize it maybe, but you're only getting about half the PSI out of the shower. So your 10-minute shower used a lot less water. But that's the last dial we have to turn. We can't get more water out of the ground. So the only thing we can do then is restrict what goes out into the system. And so we pretty much, I've used up every trick in the bag. The last thing we've got to do then, we've got to go to water restrictions till winter. Now, if everybody was calm, and everything was normal, and we were stable, we could probably easily do three days' work, if everybody was normal. We've just got to make it stable. The problem is, like, now we have the water leak, and we fixed... It's a whole different animal, the main leak. We actually haven't filled the tanks. The tanks, the wells shut off today. They were full. At 2:00 in the afternoon, we should be full. Everybody's gone. Nobody uses any more water from about 10:00 in the morning until 2:00. There's no water usage. Nobody's sprinkling, nobody's showering. There's virtually no water, no water going out. 2:00, we're full. Then the wells just rest. About 7:00, 7:30, they start to drop. And we've gotten them set on a tight range, 5 feet. 28, 27 feet, our wells are full at 27 feet. At 22 feet, the wells come on and try and fill. For three days, we were 15. After running 72 hours straight, we were 15 feet. It couldn't get beyond 15. That was the problem. So, and to break kind of understand, yeah. In the future, we have to put another well. But we now know we have to put another well. Yeah, Danny?
You were talking about, you know, the spiking. Could you be more clear to the residents, like designate certain streets? Well, for certain days, or certain areas, or certain... So that not everyone's going to know, is it odd or even? They know that, you know, Melville, Cary Lane, and Stowe can water on Tuesday.
Yeah, well, we're going to make it a little bit simpler on the timing and the days of the week.
And how much?
We're just going to make it a little bit simpler, and I think it'll be okay. We didn't run out of water. We're not going to run out of water. I don't like the fact that we don't have fire flow. I want to have hours' worth of fire protection in the wells at all times. That's, that's what we like to do, is we like to have fire flow. And for the last three days, we were right on the fringe of fire flow. We were right on it where if we had a fire, they were going to drain the tanks.
So it's sort of just regular usage or was it... It wasn't that critical? Still had plenty of water for regular...
Yeah, we didn't go to stage five, like the world is ending, you know, like, you know, the tanks are draining. We just went three days where we didn't put any, we couldn't gain inventory. And that was the problem. So what I'm... So the easiest thing that I think of right now, what we've done is, I've already... So under my authority, we moved to stage four. Stage four is that we can water two days a week. Not stage four, two days a week, three days.
That's three.
That's three. So we're going to stage four.
Of course, three is five.
Okay, so, yeah. Okay, so here's what I'm proposing. Make this a little bit simpler. Because the ordinance gets confusing on even and odd days. Because it was funny, Ed called me, and I totally interpreted very the opposite of what he did. Because that's the way we did it in Florida. You want to see him stand? So, so basically, what even and odd is... Because the problem is, you can't use dates. You can't use the day of a month. Because it flips. Tuesday is even this week, Tuesday is odd next week. You have to keep resetting your sprinklers. So what we want to do is, we want to stick to days of the week again. So if it stays three, stage three is even odd water. So odd, odd addresses water on the odd days of the week. That's Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, days one, three, and five. So odd addresses Monday, Wednesday, Friday. Even addresses are Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday. And it's fixed. So you don't have to go out and check... Okay? So even days, Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday. If we go to stage four, which is what we're in starting today, you just cut out the middle one. You don't, you don't pick different days. So instead of Monday, Wednesday, Friday, you go to your sprinkler, you turn off Wednesday. You get to keep doing Monday and Friday. That's the two days a week. If we go back to three days a week, which I think we will do eventually, just go back and press the button for Wednesday. You know, if you're Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday, just do Tuesday and Saturday, and later you go back and press Thursday. I don't want people adjusting their sprinkler system. I think that's what screwed us up. Because people like me took it little. 3:00 in the morning on Wednesday was Wednesday. That wasn't Tuesday. So I reset mine, and I think a lot of people, when I drove the neighborhood, didn't. They left Tuesday night, even though it was Wednesday. Does that make sense? Now, the other thing to make it simplified on everybody, to get rid of that problem, water from 6:00 PM to midnight. Give us a chance to get the tanks full in the morning. So we have two peak periods, 6:00 AM in the morning till 9:00 AM. And then from about 7:30 to about 9:30. Those are our two peak drawdown periods. So if we move the sprinkling back to 6:00 PM to midnight, it means you know what day of the week it is. Tuesday at 10:00 is Tuesday. Right? We don't, we don't have the date problem. So I just think, I think we educate people, and we make it simple, then we can stabilize the system. We've got to make it stable. Okay? That's what I'm... Every day's different. Every day is a different adventure with the wells right now. And I don't like that. I want there to be consistency. And that's what we've got to get to right now, is get consistency. Now, the other things are, that I'm proposing, is if you want to hold it in your hands, that doesn't hurt us. That's five gallons a minute. You can hand water all you want, anytime you want. Just have a trigger on your hand, so it's a shelf. Not that we're going to run around and be the trigger police, but have a cutoff in your hand, and you can water all you want. Because you've got to stand there and do it. If you want to use a sprinkler, that guy, that's also okay. You're not going to kill us. Just put on timer. Go buy one of those little, you know, spring-loaded timers or something. I know somebody out there, I've talked to somebody, Larry King, he's got a little trap. It rolls to the end, it turns off. But again, those are five gallons a minute. Those don't do anything. The thing that hurts us is, somebody on Stowe kicks off their rotors and does 20 zones for three hours total. And that sucker's putting out 60 or 70 gallons a minute on those rotors. So they use 10,000 gallons at a shot. And, you know, we're putting in 200 gallons a minute. Okay? So, you know, well's running non-stop, you know, for, for an hour. You know, and we're getting in like 7,000 gallons in an hour. And they're putting 10,000 gallons out, but we're putting in seven. That's the problem. So, to me, I think these are reasonable, you know, and that's why I need, you know, I think we want to change the ordinance to make it simple. But I don't think people should have a problem with, you know, like I said, the rotor, the flip-flop, the oscillating stuff, it's not our problem. It's the big irrigation.
It's the ancient ground stuff, people irrigating the grass, that's the, that's the hard sort.
Yeah, it's the sprinkler systems you're talking about.
Yes, the ordinance.
I've known that three days ago for my garden actually. But that's a...
No, but I mean, you know, that's... Because there are people, you know, they want to water your flowers, or ornamentals, or whatever, and really, that's not hurting us. You know, that, that's never going to be a problem. If you're willing to stand out there in the heat and do it, then, you know, that's...
Yeah, pot declines, things have to add, right? That some pots just give you a water once a day, so...
Are you going to put some light ends in the ordinance, so that...
It already has, it already... It's $200, the minimum fine. Not still any ordinance. I think there's something, I don't remember, I thought at some point, if you do it X amount of times, in theory, we could turn your water off.
It's the standard language of, it compiles on, you know, so the fines, and then it gets to a point that if the fines don't mean anything to you, put a padlock mark.
But, you know...
So this is really for the irrigation system? Someone washing a vehicle, or watering a garden, it doesn't matter what day or what time you're doing that? Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Uh, but actually, I'm lying, so there is...
That's what I was saying, because I did hear that outside of...
Well, in, in stage four, you, you can't like go and hose down your drive, you can't race water. You can't hose down your driveway, or you can't wash your boat.
So what we're actually, what this is, right? So in stage one and two, like vehicles, boats, cars, no restrictions. But in stage three, you're trying, you know, don't do it. We're trying to stay essential water use only. And but also maintain, understand that people have expensive landscaping. We don't have good soil here, so we don't want to lose houses or that. So we're trying to maintain some of the, the bare minimum.
So I, I think that, you know, this is...
Mark's case, you kind of just in under the wire, right? There's a, there's a line in here, don't pressure wash your house during the summer. Do that in spring and fall.
So, I, I think, I think we'll be better off once we... And I'm going to, I'm going to put out flyers, I'm going to put the, our notices back out where they're at. So we have boxes with notices. So it's going to be well-publicized what it is. I, I think once that gets out there and simplified, and people understand, like, yes, you can stand there with the hogs. So if you really got a spot that's, you know, dead as a doornail, where you're really trying to save, no problem, you can put one of those guys there. You're not the problem. But I, I think even if everybody just did what they did, but they stuck to the days, we'll be fine. I can't double up. I can't have the doubling effect like we had before. That's my fear. And, and I fully believe that if we stabilize, I think later on... I talked to our engineers today. The engineer said to me, they said, you know, what's funny is, your peak is August 15. Everybody typically peaks in mid-August. So all the water systems have a problem right now, because it's a month early. August is when everybody's usually dying. So people are starting to get nervous, because we're early and we're craving. So that's what's got me to believe that if we can get through this, two days a week, I, I think later on, we'll probably be able to go through three. I mean, if, if we follow the rules, we'll be just fine.
I'm not sure if this is true or not, but I have heard that Frisco is already one once a week. Did anyone else hear that?
Little Elm starts out on... Little has, it's locked in the calendar. They go to, I think it's two days a week, automatic.
Yeah, I think they're three days a week all year long.
Yeah, and I think, goes to like two on make... The pipeline, the Trin... Uh, who is that? Who did the pipeline, North Texas?
North Texas Water and something.
Someone diswatered it on the pipeline. They imposed... If you're on their pipeline, you... It's a Little Elm's better on two days a week, as long as I can remember, during the, the heat here. That's their standard. So I, I wouldn't surprise me that when they ratchet up, it goes back to water.
That's in Frisco.
Frisco, yeah. But, I mean, like I said, we're, we're not in danger of running out... If we were in danger of running out of water, we'd be at stage five. But we're not. But, um, and hopefully, we can get the situation. In the winter, we'll fix it. And then I'll be coming back to you with plans for another one. So anyway, the, so what, what the objective tonight was, was to allow us to better monitor the system, to change the ordinance with these changes in it. So that, just to make it easier for everybody to understand. And that's really why I called, to update everybody, but to make these changes, to make it easier to understand, to make it easier for me to enforce it, for us to be able to go around and get people, educate them, flip their stuff.
So the effective date of...
Today. I've already moved us to stage four. So we're in two-day-a-week water right now. But if this, assuming we approve this, then I will now write a letter, and, and file for everybody, and we'll blanket everything. We will, we'll start on that until, until such time as, as we change.
Say, Mark?
Yeah?
Just curiously, why... You could have added times, like Tuesday 12:00, you know, 12:01 AM until 11:59 PM, so that we keep it within a day. I mean, you said people get confused, it's a Tuesday or Wednesday.
Yeah, I think it's just easy... One of the problems that we had when I was here watching was that about midnight, people go to bed, but they turn their sprinklers on. So, I mean, my irrigation starts like 1:30 in the morning. Then, so I'm watching the wells do this. So in the early morning hours, we were using a lot of water. Well, the problem was that we were using all that water then, but we didn't start full. We, we weren't full by then. So in the morning, at 6:00 AM, we were at 5 feet in, in the, in the steel tank, out of 16 feet. We were at 5. So we were within about a foot of that well actually, of that pump's actually turning off, because it was going to hit the low water, where it was going to suck the tank dry. So, so that was...
Well, let me rephrase it then.
Yeah, I, I think, I think, I think what you're asking is what, what's noted there is the watering time should be between 6:00 PM and midnight.
Or, yeah, if you're trying to replace the well at night, then say you can't start watering until 4:00 in the morning, 4:00 AM.
Well, the problem is, our, our rush time is, is in the morning, when people get up and start showering. We've got like about 6:00 AM till about 9:00 AM. That's our peak usage, when there's more going out of the system than we can put in.
And change it till 7:00 PM? I, you know, I'm just trying to... If people are going to get confused, if you just tell them what the precise times are. If there's a window, and it starts at 7:00 PM, or 8:00 PM, or 9:00 PM, and it's over by 12:00 PM, nobody should be watering. That would put a big...
Yeah, that's, that's what this proposal is, this same Tuesday, like 6:00 PM to midnight.
The fundamental problem that I would... I, I talked to someone...
Sorry, I didn't beat that line.
Oh, okay, okay. No, I thought we were interpreting differently.
No.
Okay, so you said another peak time is the 7:30, 9:30.
Right.
So you're setting this time, 6:00 to midnight. Aren't you worried people are going to be running sprinklers now more during that peak time?
They, well, they, most people, they are, but they aren't, right? The problem is that if you, if, they tell you to water before then, in the peak, the heat of the day, you're basically just watering there.
Yeah, yeah, no one wants to water there.
If, if we, it's, it's a catch-22, that if we say that, you know, you can only water from 10:00 to midnight, then everybody's going to murder us. So we've got to give them big enough windows, so we can space it out a little bit.
So why don't you do it after, because you're trying to stay away from the 1:00 AM to 2:00 AM?
Right, I don't want to get into that, like, you know...
So are you worried about it being in that peak time?
No. And here's why. I was worried Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, because when we hit that time, we were half-full. Today, for example, at 2:30 this afternoon, the wells turned off. All the tanks were full. And then I just sit there, full, basically. Because nothing's happened between 2:30 and about 6:30 or 7:00. So we're, we're max, so it, it shouldn't hurt us.
As part of the impact, these studies that we've done, looking at the water, there's been two things that have been very consistent. One, our water consumption goes up four times in the summer. So we know it's landscaping water, so that's what we're going with here. The other is the times of the day. We know that Sundays, the biggest usage, so no irrigation on Sundays would make help. And the one consistent thing that you have to do is, you have to figure out where your peak times are. For every year that we've looked at, they're right, where, where I'm proposing this one goes up here. So you're right, we could hit maybe 1:00 AM or 2:00 AM, but then get into confusion. So I think right now, we just have to get, we have to drop the hammer, get everybody stable. And I agree with Mark, based on what we've seen. Within a few weeks, temperature breaks a little bit, we could probably go to stage four.
But the, so there's no way, the only way to fix this is in November drilling deeper? Is that, so there's no...
There's no drilling.
There is no drilling, the well's already in the ground. So there's, the motor's hanging.
Dropping.
It is, yeah, just screening more pipe on the end, and more electrical cable, and lowering it, and seeing how low it'll go before it hits the top of that screen.
So there's, the immediate thing we do is the water restrictions. And the next stage is in the winter, see how far we can actually lower that pump in the water, so we can get more water over the top of it. So the next, after that, there's a new well, which we've been planning.
Yeah, I knew this.
We're going to have to accelerate that forward.
What about filling pools, or hoses and pools and stuff?
So filling a brand-new pool is obviously...
Not filling, no, like, because it's not great, you know, some people love to fill their pool.
So it talks about that in here, but top-offs are the same things. It's, it's the long irrigation that hits, and they can... So top-offs are, what we're going to ask is, you know, just a little bit of the tunnel, right? Fill your, you let it come down six inches and you hit it.
But you still do that in your watering?
That's part of, part of the change, is you, is the water economy, if you'll go in your...
So you were going to ask us about the screen?
Yeah.
There is.
The, the, the screen is stationary, right?
Correct.
Okay, so the only way to lower it further, if that was a consideration, was, is to remove the whole deal and drill more?
Yeah, it's just not...
Once the well's drilled, it's done.
It's just not done. Once you drill a well, and you put the casing, and you put the screen, and the well is complete, it's a wrap.
Okay.
That's it. So all you can do then is, is the motor then is hanging in the water.
You work with what you have, or do you move on?
Did you say you didn't? Space was between the well and the screen?
Problem is, we know what was, we, we have the logs on what they say they did when it was built. And they moved it since then.
So it's a newly-used car, you don't look before you just go in it?
Exactly. We don't know what they did before. That's why we were guessing when we lowered the, the top well. We were hoping, and they lowered it, and we hit 18 feet, it was in, it's like, oh crap. But that was, well, that's all we had to get, and that's the end of that well. You know, it's the water table.
And the reason they don't set them all the way down to begin with is the trade-off between the, the deeper you go, you have more head pressures, you get less production. At the time when they drilled that well, it was pretty good set, or based on the water table was. But here it is, what, 12, 2002, 2018, and you've seen a significant drop in the water table.
So, but... So, but.
So there is some potential that that water table will rise, or not?
Some potential that, you know, people, pump, what?
Well, actually, you think about this, right? So Prigg is down, like, that one, nine years of pretty severe drought. And the outcrop areas, which is the record for us, well, the last two years, we've had pretty good rain, they've had pretty good rain up there. Doesn't recharge the aquifer as fast as we're pumping down, so the aquifer's got the same problem we're doing with our tanks.
Yeah.
And the, the whole region is, is pumping more water out of that than what's getting recharged.
It's kind of an ironic catch-22, is that as the aquifer goes down, cities that are growing, like Little Elm and all that, are getting out of the aquifer. Because they can't, they're going to pipelines. You can't supply on the aquifer. So it's actually people getting out, which is good for us, because we will never get out. So it's, it's weird. As it becomes less, it's more for us.
Problem is, it's, it's bad as fast.
Yeah.
But I mean, Little Elm, we'll have a sink right there, which I passed them every single day. That's in the same aquifer as these two are over here.
And when they stopped, and we lowered ours, that's when, well, number two started performing better, when they shut their top.
So, but, you know, we're gonna, it is what it is. And, uh, it's just, uh, we hoped it would've lasted a little longer.
Well, they saw for, once the peak season is over, will it start filling back up, like, uh, from, you know, more rains, it starts raining more and all that.
Well, because it's way up there. I mean, typically, what, well, we just, we turn off the well. We're running only two wells. We don't have the two wells side by side, fighting against each other. So it's like, right now, we're putting out 60 gallons a minute of our big well, without cavitating. And we have to throttle that. The other well's putting out 50. Okay? 60 and 50, the two wells side by side. Before, we turned the second well on, we were putting out 100. The big well by itself was putting out 100 by itself. We turned on the other well, it immediately sucked it down. So we're literally scratching our heads. I'm looking at two wells are making that much more than one well by itself. Because the master lines put them side by side in 2002.
But I mean, after the peak season, we get into November and all that, I was wondering, will the aquifer come back up and be more effective?
We, we just stop sucking.
Yeah, and it's.
We turn off the well.
So, so that's why it's.
So it's not that it's less water flowing. No, it's truly a drawdown situation, right? If the light, right, is big enough, you go out there, you set some pump in there, you're not gonna see a difference. But if you put a large enough pump, it's gonna suck that water down.
So it's like, those pumps fight each other?
Yes, oh yeah.
And so, when you also, you have the well, right, and the casing that goes down, a little water in the water tables, and pours material. So it can't float into that casing where the pump is pumping out as fast as the pump. So that's why the level comes down in the casing. And then once you get a certain point, then it's sort of sucking air through the top, and that's when it comes to the cavitation over. How do you help it?
And the, the newer well, it's bigger. They put a bigger motor in it. So not only did they put two wells side by side, they put one bigger than the other. So.
How far are they deep was from each other?
20 feet. Virtually side by side. So, you know, they do the math. One well puts out 100, two wells side by side, put out 110.
You cross section on two planes, and you have both wells.
So, anyway. All right, so what I'm asking the council to do is to approve these, uh, changes to the ordinance. And then we will go on, and, uh, I'll keep you updated as things.